Reflected is Tuesday, October 19th, 2021 at 7:48 PM. This meeting is being conducted pursuant to Governor Pritzker's disaster proclamation in Public Act 101-0640, which amends requirements of the Open Meetings Act due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Although remote attendance is an option for the board members, all are present, thus we do not need to confirm the audio. All the materials for this meeting are available on the village's website. We recommend the members and the public follow the agenda as posted. For the items with public comment, after members have spoken, I will afford public comment as follows. Once either chair have a list of all public commenters, I will call on each person present at the meeting and afford them three minutes for their comment. Further time up to an additional three minutes may be granted by a motion of the village board. The public was also provided the opportunity to submit a request until noon today by email to theclerksoffice@tinleypark.org or by placing their written request in the dropbox at the village hall to participate publicly via a live telephone call at the relevant portion of the public meeting. Written comments will not be read aloud. And finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. At this time, please, everybody, let's stand with for a pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Trustee Brady.
Present.
Trustee Brennan.
Present.
Trustee Galante.
Here.
Trustee Mahoney.
Present.
Trustee Mueller.
Here.
Trustee Sullivan.
Here.
President Glatz.
Present.
Thank you. I'd like to ask the board for a motion to consider approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call for item one. Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. Motion carries. Item number two, I'd like to ask the board for a motion to consider approval of the minutes of the special village board meeting held on October 5th, 2021.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Bill.
Roll call for item two. Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item number three, receive presentation of the Tinley Park Business Spotlight, Clerk Theryan and President Glatz.
Tonight, we're pleased to welcome Local One, a new restaurant with locations inside Even Hotel at 18501 Convention Center Drive and the 80th Avenue train station at 18001 South 80th Avenue. Local One offers traditional diner fare and homestyle authentic farm-to-table food at both locations, as well as late-night drinks and private events at the Even Hotel location. Local One also offers catering service in a grab-and-go market at the train station for commuters on the move. Please join us in welcoming Daniel Fitzgerald from Local One.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I was gonna bring waiters and have them like pass in our durs while I was talking, but I figured my break parliamentary procedure, so we forewent that. I'm gonna go chronologically because I don't have any bells and whistles to present tonight. I want to stay on point. About three years ago, Peter Duvan and Michael White purchased the Holiday Inn in Tinley Park Convention Center management contract. Going back to then, and this was when they took over in 2019, we had a banner year, and we were looking for a great year in 2020 as well, and then March 13th hit. So fortunately for us, and we didn't know it then, we started the renovation of the Even Hotel and the conversion that was completed on December 23rd. The Local One portion of that was the former restaurant of the hotel and always did very well in servicing the guests from the convention center, from the hotel, had really good demand generators from both, as well as the amphitheater. So the idea was, when we were changing it over, is what happens when all those folks are gone? Those demand generators aren't there, and why can't we get more of the concentric five-mile circle? So that's what we're, that's what Local One's about. Local One's about making it relevant to the residents of Tinley Park, whether it's at the hotel or at the train station, which opened about six weeks ago. And we opened very softly, opened for breakfast, five to 10 right now, and we're doing special events. We've done one. We have one Friday night, and yours truly gets to cook at it, so I'm very excited about that. But seriously, the whole idea is to parlay the name Local One into Local One at the Convention Center, Local One at the Hotel, and now Local One at the Train Station. So the idea is to be relevant, to be out there, to be servicing the community, and we're gonna start some programming here around the holidays, so there'll be more to come. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay.
Appreciate everything you do.
Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Okay. Night, everyone.
I'd like to ask the board for a motion to consider adopting Resolution 2021-R-089, recognizing the accomplishments of Father Kenneth Fleck, pastor of St. George Catholic Church upon his retirement.
I'll make that motion. I'll second that.
Thank you. Father Fleck is retiring after 44 years in the priesthood. He has ministered at St. George Catholic Church in Tinley Park for 17 of those years. The village extends warm thanks to Father Fleck for his many contributions to Tinley Park through his service and wishes him success in his retirement. Father Fleck, would you like to say a couple words?
You know me well. You're a coach by my parishioners to say just a couple of words. There's three things in life that are certain: death, taxes, and... No, 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 no. Resurrection. The reason I mention that, that's important. If we forget that, then we forget the direction of our lives and the purpose of our lives and the end goal of our lives. It's not just to get through life, be successful like a game of Monopoly, but it's to make a difference in our passing through this world. And God has given us that opportunity, and you, as president and trustees here in Tinley Park, have a major role to play in community service. So I thank you for your service and, you know, being part of that and improving on the community. All of us, religious leaders and all leaders as well, and parents, play an important role, and we work together, and that's ever so important. The three words I concluded my homily with at St. George this last Sunday was "I love you." And isn't that what God asks of us? Jesus, in his last words before he left, said, "I give you a new commandment: love one another as I have loved you." And that's what I sought to do through my ministry, my skills, growing pumpkins, a 303-pound pumpkin. I finally got one. Name St. Paul. St. Peter's still in my garden. I can't lift him. He's bigger than St. Paul. And then also cooking lessons for the kids, the apple trees on our property, and so many other ways in which I tried to bring the message of Christ and our faith to bear for children and our community and my parish. Thank you very much for this honor and recognizing my service. God bless you.
Father Fleck, before you sit down, the board, we all signed a resolution for you. If we can come around and give it to you. Board, wanna come take a photo?
(inaudible)
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 I'd like to, before we move on to the next item, you wanna introduce a former mayor, Seaman's brother? Father Seaman?
(inaudible)
The next?
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
Thank you, Ar.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here. I love Tinley Park. My brothers lived here for about 45 years, and so I'm a little slow, but I finally caught up with them. So it's just a real blessing to me to be a part of this community. So thank you very much. I appreciate your welcome, Mr. President, and to all the trustees. I wish you all the best. You've got so many important and complicated things to deal with, but our prayers go with you, our best wishes, so go get 'em, gang. Thank you.
Thank you. Father Fleck, before you go, Ken, is your cookie recipe is in here?
The cook, yes, the cookie recipe is in there. I forget if it's on page 190. Check out page 191, see if that's right.
Okay. I've been a recipient of those cookies, and they're fabulous. You should've brought some, really.
We can see.
When's your next meeting? I'll make some and bring them to you.
It'll hold you to it. It's on record, Father.
That's right.
In November.
The new chip on the block. Is it page 191?
Is he right?
192. Eyes closed.
Okay. And also, too, I'd like to comment, I've been performing over at Father's Nights at Columbus show that we put on there for the past 14 years, and just to let you know, Father has been my opening act many times.
Took it away from you. Could I share just one of those stories with you quickly?
Sure.
There's this elderly gentleman over in Ireland, and he's rather shabbily dressed. It's a rainstorm outside of a pub, and he's standing out there, and there's puddles all around. And he's got a short little stick about two feet long and a four-foot string at the end of it, and he's dipping it up and down in the puddle. A gentleman comes along and he says, "Oh, I feel sorry for that poor old guy. He's deaf. He's, you know, he's gone Lewy." And so he goes up to him, "Can I invite you in for a tip of whiskey with me?" He says, "I'd be happy to." And after they've tipped a couple of whiskies, he goes out and he's, you know, he gets enough courage, and he says, "I noticed you out there with your fish and rod and string. Did you catch anything today?" He says, "You're the fourth one."
I had to follow that.
You're gonna follow it?
No, no, I mean, that's what I had to follow all those years.
Next time you're over, let me know. I'll be your lead act. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Father. Thank you.
Hey, that's good.
We haven't passed the resolution yet?
We're gonna vote.
We're gonna vote right now. We're gonna decide if we should, if we should pass it or not.
You wanna change your mind?
You're not done yet.
I don't eat these politely.
So would anyone from the public like to comment before we vote?
Of course. As a parishioner of St. George, on behalf of the parishioners of St. George, I want to thank the board for recognition of Father Kent. Thank you.
If I may take just one moment, I also want to say thank you for all your years of support. You've been with us through Tinley Wish. Every year you've gone with us, it's been fabulous to have you with us. Thank you very much.
Well, I could add to that, Father, and your years of service now later to the community, but to our Boy Scout troop, you know, which is sponsored by the Tinley Park Police Department, Troop 911. If you go by St. George and you see the outdoor Stations of the Cross, that was one of our Eagle projects. That Father helped us get through and had it taken care of, and it was done by Sean Avant, okay?
That's right.
And thank you for your help with that project that we did, and our yearly pancake breakfast that we did.
Thanks.
And we never charged him. So, okay.
You always gave me the ham bone so I could have split pea soup.
That's right. That was my job to give him that.
Go ahead, Leslie.
I just want to say, I've been a member of Tinley Park for 47 years, and all those years have been at St. George. But this past year, Father always donated tomatoes and vegetables to the Tinley Park pantry. This, this, this past year with the COVID, he donated almost close to 8,000 pounds of fresh vegetables.
No.
Yes, yes. It was almost 1,200 every time. I kept track, Father.
Is that including the pumpkin?
No. No, it didn't include the pumpkin. It was, it was tomatoes and peppers and all the, all the vegetables. He grew.
I think, okay, thank you, Leslie.
Anyone else care to comment before we decide to vote? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Roll call for item number four, the adoption of resolution recognizing the accomplishments of Father Kenneth J. Fleck. Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Father Fleck.
See you next meeting, Ken.
Thank you.
That ain't no joke.
No, I'm serious.
Next, we have item number five. I'd like to ask the board to consider receiving a presentation from Jesse Elam of the Cook County Department of Transportation and Highway regarding the Fair Transit South Cook Pilot Program. Cook County's Department of Transportation and Highway has established a partnership with the region's transit agencies to launch the Fair Transit South Cook Pilot. The pilot offers up to 50% fare reduction on the Metro Electric and Rock Island lines, as well as increased services on the Pace Route 352 Halsted. The three-year pilot projected, launched in January of 2021, enhances transit services and lower costs for residents of the south side of Chicago and south suburban Cook County, including the village of Tinley Park. The county is underwriting costs for each participating agency. It's all yours.
Sure, I won't be able to put on a show quite like that, but thanks for giving me a little bit of your time this, this evening. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, uh, thank you, trustees. I'm Jesse Elam. I'm the Planning and Policy Director at Cook County Department of Transportation and Highways. I also have a colleague of mine from Metro, one of the participating agencies in this. And like I said, I do appreciate you giving me a couple minutes on your agenda. So I wanted to talk to you about how we're trying to bring better and more affordable transportation options to South Cook, including Tinley Park, and that's their program that we're calling Fair Transit South Cook. And under President Preckwinkle's leadership, as well as the Metro Board's leadership and Cook County Boards, we have a special deal going on with Metro to cut fares in half on the Metro Electric and the Rock Island lines, and that lower fare is available to everyone who rides the line. It's not just to students or to senior citizens or veterans or anything like that. People don't need to do anything special. You don't need to sign up for anything. You don't need to go on a website and enter your address or your telephone number. You just need to go and buy tickets the way you normally would. They're half off. We are going out and among other channels that we're using, trying to build awareness of the program by coming to local governments that are partners in this. We also have advertising campaigns, other marketing campaigns going on with social media and with some highway billboard ads and some other stuff like that. But the part of it is a ground game and just coming out and making sure that there's a level of awareness about it. We also have a deal with Pace to add service, as the mayor was just explaining. About 25 more, 25% more service is what that works out to be. This is on Pace's most heavily patronized route, and so what this means is that there's more buses coming during the rush periods, there's more service on the weekends, and then the service runs for longer during the weekdays. Why are we doing this? I'll, I'll just give you some stats on transportation in South Cook County that helps paint a picture for why doing this program is so critical. So first off, communities along the Metro Electric and parts of the Rock Island have some big affordability challenges. So we've got households there spending really big chunks of their available income on transportation. And then you combine that with the affordability challenge, you actually have people on the south side of the city in South Cook County, particularly black residents, who have extremely long commutes, regularly more than one hour. And some of that is just because of a lack of jobs nearby, but even that kind of comes back to the affordability issue again, where people might want to take Metro as a faster option but just don't have it in their budgets to do so, and this program helps with that. And then a lot of the area served by the program is in places where people don't have personal vehicles, at least not to the same degree, and so they rely on transit more than others. This does tend to be a city issue, but it's not exclusively a city issue. There are plenty of zero-vehicle households down in the south, further down in the south suburbs, particularly along the Metro Electric. And then there's the story of the communities themselves. We know that there's a connection between transportation and economic development. This map that you see here, or hopefully can see here, is from CMAP, and it shows places where there have been long-term, where there's been long-term disinvestment, meaning that there have been long-term declines in property values, which has led to low tax receipts, which has led to increased tax rates, which then puts pressure on the business, businesses themselves to, to, to leave. And so, you know, that's a complicated situation. I think we all know that. Transportation is just one piece of the puzzle. A lot of other factors at work, but I think this pilot does serve places in the region where business and job growth have been hard to come by. And so I think that the support that this program has for the transit system could be one piece of broader, broader strategy of reinvestment. So we know that Fair Transit South Cook is having a beneficial effect on riders. When we've asked them, as we did through some man-on-the-street interviews back in the summer, yeah, people do appreciate the bus coming more often, they appreciate the train being cheaper. There's nothing really surprising about that, but what we did get a better feel for is the rider's stories, like why this is important to them, why it helps them, like they lost a job, or they're a student, or what, what they personally got out of the program is important to, to understand for us. So this is a three-year program, started this January. It's gonna go to January 2024. We're gonna have lots of surveys and lots of data analysis along the way. I think that's all gonna become more relevant as hopefully we get out of the pandemic and ridership starts to stabilize some, because I think it's no secret that the transit system, the transit agencies have really, really suffered during the pandemic. I think even, even as of now, Metro is only at about 30-ish percent of the ridership that it originally had back in 2019. So we do hope that this program helps get people back on the train, helps people get back on the bus, certainly supporting the transit system as part of it. So I thank you for your time. We have some, I was gonna say we had some leave-behinds. We, because of a communication snafu, I forgot to bring those, so my apologies for that, but I will direct you to fairtransit.com. That's a place where you can find out all about this program, how it came to be, and, and get community, get a download of a community toolkit that can be, that can be useful for, for outreach. So I appreciate your time, and I'd be happy to take any questions at this point.[1440.01] So I appreciate your time, and I'd be happy to take any questions at this point.
Any questions from the board?
I, I didn't know the program existed. I just bought a reduced ticket, so appreciate it.
There you go.
I got two daughters that travel from downtown every weekend back home, so this is great for me.
That's great to hear. Great to hear.
You don't, you don't make cookies.
I sort of make cakes. I made a cake for my twins' birthday yesterday. I failed at it, so it's not going to go in a recipe book.
You will not be on 192 with that book. Thank you, Jesse. Appreciate it.
It's the effort that counts.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out.
Next, we have item number six. Trustee Sullivan.
Receive a presentation of the Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA, Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for Fiscal Year 2022 Budget Document.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Dennis. Go ahead, Colleen.
Discussion. The Village of Tinley Park has been awarded the GFOA's Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for the Fiscal Year 2022 Budget Document. The recognition is based on meeting criteria that goes above and beyond statutory requirements and embodies transparency, best practices, and a document that can be understood by the general public, not just those with a finance or accounting background. This is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and finance for budgeting, and is the fifth budget award the village has received from the GFOA.
Wow.
No specific action required, but great job.
Thank you, Colleen. Move on. Item number seven. Does anyone from the public here to comment on GFOA?
Item number seven. I'd like to ask the board for a motion to consider appointing Ronald Cuss to the position of 911 dispatcher.
So make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Ronald Cuss was identified as a highly qualified candidate to support the 911 Communication Center operations. Ron has nearly fifteen years of professional emergency preparedness experience, including eleven years of dispatching emergency and non-emergency services for two local communities. Ron is LEED certified. He was appointed to the South Suburban Emergency Response Team, CERT, as a tactical dispatcher for a high-profile incident and awarded the CERT Team Commander's Award of Excellence in November 2018. In addition, Ron is active with giving back to the community, championing initiatives for Special Olympics, law enforcement, torch run, and emergency services, and disaster agency, ESDA. Ron holds a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. Please consider appointing Ronald Cuss to the position of 911 dispatcher, effective on October 21, 2020. Ron, would you like to say a couple of words?
I appreciate everybody who let me come here today and look forward to starting to work for this.
Thanks.
Very good. Questions from the board? Any questions from the public?
Welcome.
Congratulations.
Roll call for item number seven. Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Congratulations, Ron. Next, we have item number eight. I'd like to ask the board for a motion to consider appointing Carolina Slua to the position of Police Clerk matron.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Carolina was identified as a qualified candidate to fill the vacancy for the Police Clerk matron with the Tinley Park Police Department. She has over five years of experience holding various public safety roles in both municipal government and with private security organizations. Carolina is familiar with general police administrative operations, has performed matron, matron duties, and is currently LEED's LTFA certified. She holds an associate's degree in criminal justice. Please consider appointing Carolina to the position of Police Clerk matron, effective November 1, 2021. Any questions from the board for the chief? Any questions from the public?
Roll call for item number eight. Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item number nine. I'd like to ask for a motion to consider approval of the following consent agenda items that are listed below.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Consent agenda items have been publicly posted and available for review according to the Illinois Open Meetings Act. Would anyone from the board like to remove any of these items from the consent agenda? Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Roll call for item number nine. Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. Motion carries. Item number ten. Cookie Monster.
Consider adopting ordinance 2021-0-071, amending section 30.16A of the chapter of 30 of Title III of the Tinley Park Municipal Code relative to regular meetings of the President and the Board of Trustees.
So moved.
I'll second.
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Go ahead, Bill.
Thank you. The ordinance amends section 30 dot 16A of the chapter 30, Title III of the Tinley Park Municipal Code pertaining to the start time of regular meetings for the Village Board of Trustees, reflecting the start time of the regular Village Board meeting from 7:30 to 6:30, beginning November 2, 2021. This ordinance is eligible, eligible for adoption.
Thank you, Bill. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Greg, would you like to start earlier?
That settles it.
Roll call for item number 10. Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Item number 11. Trustee Brady.
Yes, I'd like to have the, consider the board approving the amended regular Village Board meetings and regular committee of the whole schedules for the remainder of 2021.
So make that motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
These amended schedules for the regular Village Board and regular committee of the whole meetings reflect changes in the start time for these meetings for the remainder of 2021. The committee of the whole will begin at 6 o'clock, and the Village Board meeting will begin at 6:30 on the first and third Tuesdays of each month at the Village Hall, beginning November 2. Appropriate notice has been given to the accordance with the Illinois Open Meetings Act. Consider, please, approving this amendment, regular board meeting, and regular committee of the whole meetings scheduled for the remainder of 2021.
Thank you, Bill. Anyone from the board have any questions on item 11? Anyone from the public?
Roll call for item number 11. Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. Item number 12.
We'd also like to, if I may, Mr. Mayor, we need to let Father Fleck know we're starting earlier. So he gets the cookies here on time.
I think he left and came back.
All right.
Item number 12. Trustee Mahoney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Please consider adopting resolution 2021- R- 090, approving an intergovernmental agreement, an IGA, between the Village of Tinley Park and the Village, and the Illinois Department of Transportation.
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you.
The village typically receives payments from the Illinois Department of Transportation for the village's share of traffic signal, utility costs. In order for IDOT to be authorized to issue payments to the village, an IGA between the two parties is required. Approximately cost is $8,800, which is included and covered in annual fiscal year budget. This agreement will be effective until June 30, 2031. Consider approving an inter, intergovernmental agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation in the amount of $8,800. This item was discussed at the committee of the whole meeting held previous to this meeting. This resolution is eligible for adoption.
Thank you, Dennis. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public?
Roll call for item number 12. Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number 13. Trustee Mahoney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Please consider adopting ordinance 2021-0-072, amending title VII, chapter 75 of the Tinley Park Municipal Code to include a fee schedule for permits for, of overweight vehicles.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Go ahead, Dennis.
The village currently does not have a permit system in place to review the haul, deliver of overweight and oversized loads. OSCAR is a permit management system built to help the, the safety, security, and efficiency, efficiently of these types of permits that requires no expense of complex IT equipment or of village staff. Once the permits are prepared for, by OSCAR, they, they contact our police department, they contact our police department, and they contact, contact to have the permit approved and provide them with the routes and dates with haul that will occur. The village will receive a monthly reimbursement check of the fees charged to the hauling company. There is no cost to the Village of Tinley Park. This item was discussed at the committee of the whole meeting held previous to this meeting. This ordinance is eligible for adoption.
Thank you, Dennis. Anyone from the board have any questions for John? Anyone from the public?
Roll call for item 13. Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item number 14. Trustee Mahoney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Please consider adopting resolution 2021- R- 0191, approving a contract renewal between the Village of Tinley Park and M.E. Simpson Company for the water assessment program.
So moved.
A second.
Thank you, Colleen. Go ahead, Dennis.
The village sought a qualified contractor to conduct an assessment of our water system, which includes the following services: fire hydrant maintenance and flow testing, water system leak survey, and valve exercising. RFQs were received in fiscal year 2019 with the contract awarded to M.E. Simpson. Fiscal year 2022 will be the third of the fourth contract renewals. This item was discussed at the committee of the whole meeting held previously to this meeting. This resolution is eligible for adoption.
Thank you, Dennis. Anyone from the board have any questions for John? Anyone from the public here to comment?
Roll call for item 14. Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number 15. Trustee Mahoney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Please consider adopting resolution 2021- R- 093, approving a contract between the Village of Tinley Park and Morton Salt Company Incorporated for bulk salt purchase.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
This purchase agreement locks in the price for bulk, bulk salt from Morton Salt Incorporated, delivered to the public works facility at $66.57 per ton. Under this agreement, the village is required to take delivery of 5,500 tons of the salt over the winter season. This item was discussed at the committee of the whole meeting held previously to this meeting. This resolution is eligible for adoption.
Thanks, Dennis. Anyone from the board have any questions? Anyone from the public have any questions on Morton Salt?
Roll call for item 15. Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item number 16. Trustee Mahoney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Consider adopt, please consider adopting resolution 2021- R- 094, awarding a contract with Beverly Snow and Ice for snow and ice removal in the 21 parking lot locations in the Village of Tinley Park.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Go ahead, Dennis.
The village requested bids to perform snow removal for 21 parking lots throughout Tinley Park on September 23, 2021. The lowest qualified bidder was Beverly Snow and Ice. This contract provides for two optional one-year renewals. Consider awarding the snow removal for parking lots to Beverly Snow and Ice at the estimated cost of 25 events at $324,750. This item was discussed at the committee of the whole that preceded this meeting. This resolution is eligible for adoption.
Thanks, Dennis. Anyone have any questions for John Snow? Anyone from the public here to ask John about the snow?
Or the events.
Roll call for item 16. Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Item number 17. Trustee Mahoney.
Please consider adopting resolution 2021- R- 095, extending the, extending the contract with Xiner Trucking and Excavating for Snow and Ice Removal in the 252 cul-de-sac locations in the Village of Tinley Park.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Go ahead, Dennis.
The village awarded a contract in 2020 to Roy Xiner Trucking and Excavation to perform snow removal for 255 cul-de-sacs throughout Tinley Park. This contract provided, this, this contract provided for two optional one-year renewals. Consider awarding the first contract extension to Xiner Trucking and Excavation in the estimated cost of 10 events at $174,037.37. This item was discussed at the committee of the whole that preceded this meeting. This resolution is eligible for adoption.
Thanks, Dennis. Anyone from the board have any questions for John on his cul-de-sacs?
Well, one of them has 252, and another one down below us is 255.
I was just going to ask if that was correct. It is a typo. The correct number is 252.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For the record, it's 252 cul-de-sacs for John. Anyone from the board have any questions? Besides Bill? Anyone from the public?
Roll call for item 17. Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Item number 18. Trustee Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Consider ordinance 2021-0-073, providing for the issuance of not to exceed $17,500,000 general obligation bonds to the Village of Tinley Park, Cook, and Will Counties, Illinois, for the purpose of financing certain capital improvements within said village and refunding certain of the village's outstanding bonds, providing for the levy of a direct annual tax efficient to pay the principal of the interests of said bonds, authorizing and directing the execution of an escrow agreement in connection with the issue of said bonds, and authorizing the sale of said bonds to the purchaser thereof.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Go ahead, Colleen.
A parameter's ordinance provides the Village Board an ordinance to adopt authorizing the sale of bonds at a future date as long as certain parameters are met. This includes maximum power amount, interest rate, maturity date, et cetera. The ordinance also designates certain elected and appointed officials to complete the sale on behalf of the Village Board if the terms of the ordinance are met. A parameter's ordinance allows more flexibility in setting a sale date for the bonds. Staff recommends approval of the parameter's ordinance for the 2021 bond issue for the purpose of expanding and replacing water, sewer, drainage, and other infrastructure in the Village of Tinley Park. This ordinance is eligible for first read.
Thank you, Colleen. Any questions from the board?
I'll just say, very well put together. I think this is great for expanding some of the services that we provide to Tinley Park and doing it cheaply, so appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'll just say it's very well thought out and planned. Never cheaper to borrow money, so appreciate you guys putting it together.
Thank you, everybody.
Yep, thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Roll call for item 18. Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Item number 19. Trustee Sullivan.
Thank you again. Consider the appointment of legal counsel for the Village of Tinley Park 2021 bond issue.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Go ahead, Colleen.
Staff seeks appointment of legal counsels for the Village of Tinley Park 2021 bond issue. Staff requests the appointment of Chapman and Cutler LLP as bond counsel and Saul, Ewing, Arnstein, and Lehrer as disclosure counsel. The 2021 bond will refund the 2013 issue, saving the village approximately $500,000 in interest costs and a new issue of approximately $10 million for water, sewer, and drainage, infrastructure, expansion, and replacement. This bond issue will be abated using current revenue sources in place and will not impact the tax levy. Consider appointing Chapman and Cutler LLP as bond counsel and Saul, Ewing, Arnstein, and Lehrer as disclosure counsel.
Thank you, Colleen. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public?
Roll call for item 19. Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Item number 20. Trustee Sullivan.
Thank you. Consider the fiscal year 2021 municipal compliance report, police pension.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Go ahead, Colleen.
The municipal compliance report, MCR, is required to be provided to the municipality by the police pension board prior to the adoption of the tax levy each fiscal year per Public Act 95-0950. Staff recommends acceptance of this report. Consider accepting the municipal compliance report.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public?
Roll call for item 20. Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Next, we have item number 21. Receive comments from the staff. Pat, sweetie?
Well, I just want to, again, thank you, Mayor Platts and the board for my appointment. And it's my first meeting. We had an interesting first week last week, but we got through it. And, you know, again, I just want to commend the team that's working with me. Again, we're really excited about the future projects that we have and teamwork moving forward to achieve these goals that we have set by the board, so thank you again.
You're welcome. Hannah? Andrew, you probably said enough. You're done? Anyone else? Nope. On that note, we will move to item number 22. Receive comments from the board. Anyone from the board care to comment?
I would like to comment, should have been done last meeting, but both the chief and Officer Greg King have on the patches that are purchased at the city hall, or are they at the village hall? At the police department, okay? Backing and supporting Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I have one for the police department. I have one for the fire department as well. Forgot to bring them tonight. But certainly, everybody can go to the police department, and it's $5, chief? $10, okay. $10, okay. $10, certainly a cheap price to help with a great cause. So any of our citizens head over to the police department and bring $10 with you.
Thanks, Bill. Anyone else from the board care to comment?
Uh, no. What, the trick-or-treating hours? Are those two to six?
Two to six.
Three to six.
And we got the Boo Bash this Sunday. That's what starts at noon, noon to three?
I just want to congratulate Pat Carrigan, everyone that came out to, for the appointments. Our, I think we are doing a great job. Thank you, staff. Our appointments of our new deputy chiefs. I think we're really, you guys did a great job putting a great team together, so thank you, everyone. Item number 23. Receive comments from the public.
Good evening. I'm at the 9/7/21 board meeting. As I stood up from my seat and walked to the podium to address the board, and it's timestamp 1 hour 30 minutes and 55 seconds. Ms. Galante stated, and I quote, "Of course Nancy wants to come up because she likes to attack my child all the time and might as well attack me." I want to state first, the only time I have ever mentioned her adult son was at the 5/18/21 Village Board meeting, and that was in reference to his verbally attacking and harassing me on 12/14/2020 at Dunkin' Donuts. Other than the 5/18/21 meeting, I have never once, ever said a word about Ms. Galante's adult son. Not at a board meeting, not on social media. And I would challenge anyone to find a post-